We call the Johnson County Board of Education meeting together for October 23, 2017. First order of business.
To begin tonight with the pledge, I would like to ask Sarah Perry to come up. Sarah is a seventh grader at Johnson County Middle School. She is in gold team, married right now, and on the honor roll after the first grading period. She's the daughter of Jonathan and Robin Perry. And some history about Sarah, she played the lead role in Snow White last year at Central Elementary and was part of the International FBS Grand Champions from Central Elementary. So Sarah, if you don't care, let's send it to the pledge.
I'll say it. Pledge of the pledge, Sarah Perry. The United States of America, and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two. All right, we want to read our mission statement here at the Johnson County Board of Education. Our mission statement is the ultimate educational experience for every child, every day. Our vision is an innovative school district focused on learning without boundaries, and our core values are integrity, leadership, commitment, and service.
Tonight for our student recognition, we have two groups of people. First, we have our Johnson County High School Boys Golf Team and Coach Conley. This team did earn a right to go to state competition, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Conley.
Thank you. I want to start out by saying once again, thank you to the board members, Mr. Cochran, Tommy Kinsey Athletic Director, Noel Crum is my principal for giving me the opportunity to do this, to work with these fine young gentlemen that I have the pleasure to see almost every day during the fall season. We had a very successful season with a lot of fun and excitement. And at that point, I'm going to ask Pidgin and Jonathan to stand. This is fun and excitement. They bring it every time, okay? They bring it every time, whether it's practice, a tournament, whatever, we always have fun. And there's always excitement when these two are involved. They are, no matter where you go, where they're at, they're always there. They're juniors, they will be back next year, and will be the pillars for our success next year. They're going to be our leaders next year. Trey, would you please stand? Trey is a sophomore, and he has come so far this year. I'm very, very proud of all the effort he's worked really hard this year, and he's going to be an outstanding golfer by the time he graduates here, because he is driven to be a good golfer, and he's got that drive to make himself better. And that comes from his parents, which are back here, Martha and David, and they push him just as hard as what I do, so I know he's going to be really good by the time he's a senior. And I have two seniors that are going to be greatly missed from this team. Hannah Bullet. This is only his second year playing golf for me, and he has grown into a very complete golfer. I mean, from where he started at the beginning of his year last year to what he's come to this year to being one of the top scorers in the region in the last few tournaments and everything, you know, I'm just amazed at what he's done. And the results of his work are starting to show, and I'll go into that a little deeper here in just a second. Now, our second senior, Cash Crum. He is a four-time qualifier for the state competition, so that's a great accomplishment in itself. He's very driven and been the most consistent golfer throughout the year with his scores. And he placed, I think it was in three tournaments this year, that his scores were standing in for all-state points and everything, so that was very good for a senior year. But the best thing to say, you go ahead, best thing to say about these two seniors is they made their final high school golf stroke, playing in bowling green for a state championship. I played golf for six years, and I never had one stroke at a state competition. Those two boys finished their high school career on the grounds of a state competition, so that's great to say, so I give them a...
Can we yell for them?
Yeah. Give me a couple here behind the... Come on up here, let's get a sound.
Behind the door.
Come on up here. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Trey? Thanks, guys. Thank you. We also have another group of students to recognize tonight. Looking at one of the most important things that students can do, and one of the most important things we can teach our students, is being on time and being in attendance every day at school. And we have two students, Mr. Yance and I have looked at the list, we have two students who have had perfect attendance from kindergarten through this year, and they both are eighth graders, one seventh, one eighth grader, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Yance.
Like Mr. Cochran said, that is one of the greatest accomplishments you can have as a student. We all know how hard it is every morning to get up and go do whatever it is that we have to do. So we looked at, sort of getting back to the celebration of excellence in our district, we wanted to celebrate all those things that are excellent, and attendance is one of those things. We do have two students, like he said, who have reached the middle school level, middle school and above, who have had perfect attendance to this point. And, you know, our goal for the future is that we're going to have a lot more of these kids as they roll into middle school, but we do have two that we want to recognize tonight. And I've learned in this job that there are three kinds of students. There's those that you have to make come to school, there's those that just come to school, and then there's those that sometimes you have to make stay home. So the two that we have here tonight are going to fit in the good side of that two that you have to make stay home thing, because they probably come to school a few days when they should have stayed home, because they might have been a little too sick to be at school. We do want to recognize them. The first one is our seventh grade student, and he's had perfect attendance for the first six years of school. That's Jonathan Fitch-Patton. Good flat gap kid. Grandpa Larry Pennington really instilled in him that he should come to school every day, and he's done a great job of that. Thanks. Thanks a lot. He really did want you to go to school every day. Very, very good. Oh, yeah. The other student is an eighth... Did I get those backwards? I did. I did. Jonathan's an eighth grade student, so he's got perfect attendance first through seventh grade, kindergarten through seventh grade. The other student is a seventh grade student this year, and that's Gregory Tate Tackett. So Tate, if you could come on up. And Tate gets to come to school every day, whether he wants to or not, don't you take it. So we do thank both of them, we'll have them stand back there. I do want to give one more big round of applause to their parents, because if it wasn't for the parents who got those kids out to school every day, thank you.
I just thank you, and thanks to the parents, like we all said, very proud of you. Okay, moving on. Now, we have also each month, we've started giving the Golden Eagle Award. Each month, we award a certified person and a classified person who have gone above and beyond and have been nominated. And I'm going to try to read these without saying the name until I get them finished, so bear with me for just a second. This is an explanation of why this person should deserve the Eagle Award. This person is one of the most hard-working individuals that you will ever meet. She spends countless hours at school and at home preparing for school and the individual needs of her students. She's a huge help to her fellow teachers, from planning to guidance or just listening. She's a true mentor. This person also puts her school at the top of the priority list to make sure what she's doing is the best for her students and the students of her school. She participates in several professional groups and roles and serves on different committees, including the Lighthouse Team as a facilitator, she probably knows who it is now, the District Next Generation Leadership Team, the school NGLM team member. She most recently was awarded Technology Grant from KVET for a class set of prom books, and is part of the District Evaluations Committee member. This person is a graduate of Johnson Central High School, earned a rank one from Morehead State University. She has dedicated 28 years to the Johnson County School District, serving the students of two elementary schools. She's a lifelong learner with a growing mindset. This person is an honest and trustworthy individual who has unmatched work ethic. She's a mentor and a friend. This person is Ms. Michelle McClure, and she has lost her... She may have been lied to, but that's why she had to be here. Now, I don't know if you know, but this eagle was made by students at Johnson Central High School, used 3D printer to make that, then the art program painted that. So, and it is, the base is sponsored by Cash and Joy, so we appreciate that. Here is your certificate. This way.
Can I get you both over here?
Turn around and get... Turn around and look at him. There you go. And Brandon wants to figure that out. Okay. And the classified person. Not only does this person take care of the data they need to students, but she also finds ways at her school to make kids dress up for special occasions like prom and homecoming. She works so hard to make sure her kids have a safe prom night by overseeing Project Prom, which includes several scholarships for seniors, as well as many items they need for college. She serves many of her families at Thanksgiving and Christmas with food and clothing when they are in need. She also helps families with needed necessities such as beds, appliances, and other basic needs to make the life for our families a little easier. She has 18 years of service as a Resource Center Director, beginning at Porter Elementary at the Family Resource Center, and then moving on to the bigger tasks of Johnson Central High School. She provides guidance to other directors, and she represents the FRYSC as well in speaking legislators. Karen Sager is a very important part to this success of Johnson Central High School. For this month... She was, I do as well. It's like Christmas, it's okay to lie during the Christmas. Now, if I could, get one more picture of both of you all in behind the board.
Shauna, you're in trouble.
One, two, three. Hold on. Thank you. Prom, prom, nice. Make it good. Thank you, Ms. Sager.
Next on the agenda, we've got item four, we need a motion to approve the minutes from September 25, 2017. No regular meeting, October the 3, 2017, special meeting, and bill's on payroll through October the 19, 2017, as our motion to do so. Second, motion's made in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item five, renovation report, Mr. Adams.
This will be the second installment of our renovation report. Everything is on schedule. In fact, Trevor slides a few minutes just to kind of give you the highlights from CMTA of what's going on in our project. We've been very pleased up to this point, so I'm going to turn it over to Trevor to let him give you a couple of highlights of what we've got, where we're at.
So I guess the highlight of this report is that the boilers are installed, so now in replacement of all the coal boilers of the schools that had coal, there's now two boilers at each school, 100% redundancy, so if one were ever to break down, there's one that can serve the entire school in its place. Like Tim said, the bathrooms are going well. We're currently working on putting in the plumbing fixtures and the work behind the chase in both the bathrooms in the first phase. At Central Elementary School, we're planning on releasing that first pod next week to move the classrooms back in and start work on the second pod. The controls work is in kind of behind the scenes for a couple of weeks, but the first two schools are completely designed, the hardware for the first school is on its way. Installation of that hardware should be occurring within the next two, three weeks. Lighting started at the high school, we'll move the middle school next, so you all should start seeing the progress on the lights at the high school in the next coming days and weeks. So that's where we're at, and I request that you all approve pay up number two. Any questions, please feel free to ask.
Also, let me stress, anytime that you want to go, if you want to go in and look at what's going on up to this point, just give me a call or call one of the principals. I'd be tickled to death for y'all to see what we've got and where we're at up to this point. Like I said, we're very pleased with everything that's going on up to this point. Communication's been excellent. We beat bi-weekly, so again, anytime that you want to go, just let us know, but we do recommend that you make the payment for the second installment of the project.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve payment on the second installment for this project?
Still made.
Is there a second? Motion's made in second, any discussion? If there be no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Item six, Mr. Blair.
My name is Darrell Blair, and I'm here to present the audit of the Johnson County School District for the year ending June 30, 2017. You guys would turn over to your independent auditor's report, page number one. We have audited the county financial statements of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of Johnson County School District as of and for the year ending June 30, 2017. Management's responsibility for the financial statements. Management is responsible for the preparation and prior presentation of these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. This includes the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control relevant to the presentation, prior presentation of the financial statements that are free from material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud. Auditor's responsibility. As far as this year, KD wanted us auditors to stress to each of the board members what our role actually is forward on it, and they wanted us to specify that we wasn't actually here to catch fraud, but if we detect fraud, we would report that, that they want you guys to have internal controls in place where you can catch and detect that by yourself. Auditor's responsibility. Our responsibility is to express opinions on these financial statements based on our audit. We conduct our audit in accordance with auditing standards, general standards, United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in governmental auditing standards issued by the Secretary General of the United States. Opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to present fairly in all material respects, respect the financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of Johnson County School District as of June 30, 2017. You guys would turn over to page number three. This year is your management discussion analysis for the year ending June 30, 2017. Some of the financial highlights. First, the unit cash balance for the district was $8,92,702 in 2016, and $6,376,681 in 2017. This is a decrease of $1,716,021. This difference can be explained due to spending more money than what you're taking in. Second, from 2016 to 2017, total general fund revenue decreased by 2.8%. Revenue from the state increased by 2%. Revenue from federal sources decreased by 2.5%. Revenues from other local revenues decreased by 50%. Third, among major funds, the general fund had $28.0 million in revenue and about $30.7 million expenditures. Number five down, the district made total net payments $1,536,259 during current fiscal year. You guys would now turn over to page number seven. This year is your statement net position. You've got your governmental activities, you've got your business-type activities, and you have your total callings. I'll be going over the total. Cash, cash equivalents, $6,119,802. Monetary, $67,619. Inter-fund receivable, $941,890. Accounts receivable, and one of them is totaling all these up, they amounted to $1,916,036. Total current assets, $945,447. Next, we have total non-current assets, $26,177,371. For total assets, $35,222,818. Then we have total deferred outflows of resources related to pensions and debt, $23,340,95. You have your liabilities, current, which is due within one year, total current liabilities, $4,743,727. We have total non-current liabilities due within one year or due greater than a year, $23,920,210. And that number, we also include in that is non-current portion of your net pension liability, being $9495,690, in which technically you guys are not responsible for, that's right now what they make you guys book in. Then we have deferred inflows of resources related to pensions, $99,365. And all that difference being net position, $8,799,611. So technically, these financial statements are kind of misleading on the statement net position, because including these numbers is that net pension liability, and those deferred inflows and outflows that technically you're not responsible for, so it kind of makes you look like you're in worse shape than what you really are, but just wanted to kind of mention that. Page number nine. This year's your balance sheet, governmental funds. I won't go over the general fund, because all your other funds is pretty much restricted for a specific purpose. Cash, cash equivalents, $347,582. You have inter-fund receivable, $941,890. Accounts receivable, taxes current, $76,355. Taxes dilinked, $19,313. Accounts receivable in general, $131,945. For total assets and resources, $4,622,850. Then we have liabilities and fund balances. Under liabilities, which is due within one year, we have accounts payable, $1,149,393. And including that number there is your property tax payable that you had to look this year. Next, we have payroll liabilities, $241,382. For total liabilities due within one year, $139,375. Difference being leftover fund balance. We have restricted forward sickly payable, $261,481. Then we have unassigned fund balance in the general fund, $2,969,829. And that is the number that you really have to work with, so that's the magic number. For total fund balance, $3231,310. Total liabilities and fund balances, $4,622,850. Now, if you would turn over to page number eleven. This year's your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the year ending June 30, 2017. Total revenues, general fund, $28,357. We have total expenditures, $30,686,879. With a deficit of revenues over expenditures, $2,686,522. Then we have our other finances and sources and uses. For total, we had a use of $25,563, which gives us a net change in fund balance, $2,712,85. We had fund balance beginning July 1, 2016, beginning, $5,943,385. Then we have any fund balance, $3231,310. Now, I would like to bring your guys' attention on that net change in fund balance. It shows a deficit of $2,712,85. Now, if you take out your property tax that you had to book, the liability, you really spent about around $1,506,300 more than you took in last year, which is a pretty big number. So by knowing that, we're going to actually have some shortfalls with the state's budget, and all of that's going to hit with the local school districts. We probably need to start trying to watch our expenses, because there's no use to really wait till we actually have a problem before we try to address it. We do know it's coming, as of right now, your fund balance is $3231,000, which is healthy, but in two years, we don't know what it's going to be. So we need to try to kind of watch our expenses and try to figure ways as far as maybe to cut the budget any way that you can. You guys now turn to page number fifty-seven. This year is your scheduled findings and question costs for the year ending June 30, 2017. About three-fourths of the way down, we've got section two, findings, financial status audit. 2017-001, accounting errors, this is a repeat finding. I've kind of addressed this last year as far as during our audit at the board meeting. So we've got the same finding this year, but this year is a little bit worse than what it was last year. Condition, several material audit adjustments had to be made to correct the annual financial report, including a $6,634,963 adjustment to general funds beginning balance. Criteria, the district should have some checks and balances in place to catch these errors. The finance officer should recognize problems and correct them before the auditor arrives. Cause and condition, no checks and balances are in place to catch and correct these errors. Effect, the annual financial report is inaccurate and contains meaning material errors. Recommendation, the finance officer needs to review all accounts for discrepancies and reconcile back to known balances before sending AHR to PDE. Views of responsible officials and plan corrective actions, we will review all accounts and make sure they reconcile back to known balances effective October 1, 2017. And the superintendent, I've talked about this, and I think he's probably already put that plan into action. This year, KD stated we hadn't actually had a date for planning corrective action, so that's pretty much when we had our exit conference, so that's the date that we use on that. You guys would turn over to your vice page of your auditor's report. This year is your management later comments continued. Current year comments, board funds, 17-1, spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Cause and condition, Johnson County School District failed to notice that they had spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid. Condition, then with the district office purchased over $20,000 in rental parks without paying any bids. Criteria, all items and services over $20,000 must be bid unless it is an emergency item over $20,000 with the parts company. Effect, the district was in violation of bid laws. Recommendation, we recommend obtaining bids for all items over $20,000 unless it is an emergency item or professional service. Views of responsible officials and plan corrective actions, we thought that the auto part vendor we used was on a state pricing list. We will monitor this closely and make sure all items requiring bid is bid out effective immediately. Activity funds, 17-2, multiple receipt forms not completed. Condition, teachers were not having the students sign a multiple receipt form at Johnson Central High School, Johnson County Middle School, Flat Gable Elementary, and Central Elementary. Criteria, multiple receipt forms are to be signed by third grade students and above. Also, they need to be actively completed and turned in to bookkeeper for backup when collecting money. Cause and condition, principals are failing to enforce this requirement. Effect, bookkeeper has no idea if all money collected is being turned in for deposit. Recommendation, we recommend that multiple receipt forms to be completed by teachers and signed by actual students, third grade and above, when money is collected from or issued to students. The multiple receipt forms should be turned in to bookkeeper daily with all monies. Views of responsible officials and plan corrective actions, principals will be made aware of this requirement and then passed to have their teachers provide effective measures. By saying all this here, I would like to thank everyone for being cooperative as far as I've kind of do my audit. They pretty much got me what I needed, when I needed it. And also, I'd like to again mention that we probably need to kind of watch our expenditures again as far as since we know that they could be a potential issue in the next couple of years down the road. We need to probably kind of start cleaning it now so you guys won't get hit with anything that you're not expecting. Any questions on any of these findings?
Yes. You mentioned, watch our expenses. Based on other school systems and based on what your experience is, do you think we're doing a good job overall with expenses?
Well, as far as, as I mentioned before, you guys did spend 1.5 billion more than what you took in. I'm seeing this actually hit all over the board as far as with other districts. Most other districts are spending quite a bit more as well than what they're actually paying for. And most of it's due to, as far as your property tax revenues, it's hard to collect all pay everyone, so we've got less money coming in from the local sources. You've got your federal funding being cut. But if your fund balance is like $3,306 million or something like that, if you spend the same amount of money this year and next year, in the third year, you'd be broke as far as if you didn't do something now. But as far as, as I said before, you're still pretty healthy, so as far as in terms compared to the other districts, you may not be as healthy as what you'd like to be, but people are really struggling right now as far as trying to come up with funds to meet payroll because that's your biggest expense for the district, probably 85, 86 percent. And it's hard to meet payroll as far as when you've got less amount of money coming in year after year. And there's really no guarantee of how much you're going to get each year. But as far as, I'll just try to monitor my expenses and trying to see if there's room out there that you could cut. My motto is, if you don't really need it, don't really buy it as far as wait until you need something before you actually go and buy it. It's nice to have that stuff.
What's the?
Well, as far as, that's just, that's just an example. There's not really necessarily anything in particular as far as, like for example, if you've got some sporting equipment out there as far as like some, some schools may need, would like to have some football helmets, something that's updated and new, but they may have some there that's nothing wrong with, that they might be able to use for a couple more years to where they get in better shape as far as before they spend it. But that's, that's something that, like the principals and people would actually have to look at to see if it's really maybe at that point in time where we actually get by a couple more years.
Okay, so I think through attrition though with some of those payroll expenses, I think that's going to be taken care of. Some of the other things are going to be very challenging, but I think it's the thought of the board that we do a pretty good job being a steward of the taxpayers' money.
Correct.
But there are things that we don't have control, and that would be the state cutting our funding and some of the taxes that you had mentioned that hadn't been collected. But I was just curious compared to everybody else. Another question, you mentioned, spent over $20,000 with a vendor without any bid, that vendor being Cox Automotive Parts, I believe.
Yes.
Here locally, which I'm glad we're able to spend money locally as we should. Is that kind of one of those catch-22s that we didn't know if we were going to spend $20,000 on parts until we actually got to that point? So how do you go back and bid? Because last year, we might have only spent, or the year before, maybe $10,000 on parts.
Well, I would probably recommend as far as with the bidding process, you could actually spend $19,999 with Cox Auto Parts without actually bidding anything up for that particular year. So someone really needs to monitor these expenses to see exactly where you're at at any point of given time. And that way, before you hit that $20,000 mark, you might want to purchase off of maybe another local vendor if they carry that type of product that you need.
Okay, thank you.
But you guys, as far as boards, given what you have to work with, I think you guys try and really do a good job as far as with your expenses. Sometimes it's, it's hard because you've got all these unexpected things that might come up, maybe some repairs or something that, that you might not have like in the year before. And those things you have to do. Regardless of the cost, you've got a repair that has to be made, then you have to make it, just like a bus. You may have to buy a bus as far as you never know when your bus is going to break down and you have to replace it at that point in time. So there's going to be unexpected expenses out there. You may have a boulder or something going out. You never know as far as, you never can control each situation as far as, so that's the reason why it's kind of best to, to try to plan on have a little extra build up in case you listen need it in the future.
Very good. Any other questions?
Gerald, what is the other revenue that we decreased 50 percent?
As far as, I don't actually have AFR in detail concerning those other local revenues. It's based on the prior year as far as you may have had some sales in there, some monies. And also, you may have had some monies come in, like from the flood as far as other local revenues that you wouldn't have got in the current year. I just threw those two out there as an example, not really knowing that for sure that's what it is, but it's somewheres around that timeframe that it actually happens as far as all of those funds come in to be expanded for the students as far as in the flood area. But as far as, I'm sure Mr. can give you a detail of what actually makes up that other local revenue sources as far as on AFR in this year and then last year to have a comparison of what, what those funds represent.
Do we have a number of, do we have a percentage number of our tax base loss from last year of decrease, I'm sorry? Has our tax base decreased? Do we have a number?
Yes, I have.
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Yep.
As a matter of fact, when we passed our taxes with 4%, we should have been bringing less money on our taxes than what we did last year with.
But anytime you guys ever have any questions, I mean, you may ask us something when we get home, so I wish I'd asked this, call me up anytime. I mean, that's what I'm here for as far as, as the board all knows as far as, my service really don't quit after this audit as far as I have everyone calling me up as far as bookkeepers, people at board asking questions on what they do or what they need to do as far as accomplish whatever they need to accomplish. And I always come over and actually do whatever I need to or answer the questions over the phone, and I never really, I don't charge anything for that. So that's kind of the service, act of the service. So as I said, anytime anybody ever has any questions, feel free to call me anytime. That's what I'm here for.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Blair. Next item, Mr. Cochran.
I'm going to defer to Ms. Patton for this Skype and phone call order.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Did you, I hope, Mr. Cochran, that you gave them a copy of what they need for today?
Yeah, they have. Yes, they have.
Okay. All right, thank you. When our students took the KPREP test in the spring of 2017, we knew that there was going to be a lot of changes coming on in the future, but we never dreamed that the test that we took in the spring of 2017, that there would be no accountability tied to it. So after we took the test, we had denied to be scored, that kind of thing. Then it was announced that there would be no accountability with that assessment. So, and the reason there is no accountability with that assessment is because Senate, Senate Bill One eliminated that entire accountability system. So there's no more ungravelled learning accountability system that we, like we've had in the past few years. So we are now moving on to a new model that will not go into effect until the 2018, 2019 school year. We will be taking another test this spring, another KPREP test, but once again, it will have no accountability tied to it either. But there are some very important things that we can do. With any type of model that we have in Kentucky, we always look at the amount of novice students that we have, how many apprentices, proficient and distinguished students. And so although there's no accountability tied to the test that we just received the results back from, we still are making sure that we analyze our data and looking at how the results of this test compares to other tests that our students are taking in their classrooms. So what we as district assessment coordinators have been charged with across Kentucky is to report to our local boards how our performance was regardless of whether there's an accountability or not. That we are to have no ranking, we are to have no rating of an overall number as we have had in the past. So you may have even heard on the radio or you may have seen in other newspapers such as the Courier-Journal or the Lexington Herald where they did do some type of a ranking. But what they did was, they didn't have an overall number to rank. They just took maybe the achievement part of the assessment, or the gap part of the assessment, or the growth part of the assessment. They didn't give a total overall ranking because there was not one that was, that had been released. So what I have for you today on your document is, I did take the achievement portion, and the reason I did that is because that's what we are working hard on in our schools right now. In our professional learning communities and in our faculty meetings that we have, we are looking at the amount of students that are still scoring at low levels or those that are scoring really high in reading and math and science and social studies and writing. So as you can see there with all of our elementary schools, the scores range from the 70s to the 80s to the 90s. But you can see the state average for achievement is the 68.6. Also, I would have to note that if there were rankings in place for this type of thing in, in achievement alone, we have W.R. Castle that would have been about 13th in the state. So with that 97, and then for elementary, a 92 would be in the talks as well. But again, I say that, but I have to be careful when I say that because there's still other things that go into that measure too. So this is just the achievement part, looking at the novice apprentice proficient, distinguished. If you look there at the middle school with the 79.9 in achievement, it's well above the state average. Now, I included Johnson Central High School's achievement. It is a 57.7 and the state average is 62.3, but what I want to tell you about that is the achievement for the high school is only based on end-of-course exams. There's four end-of-course exams that students take. It's more important and that we look at other measures such as college career ready. And I am very proud to say that at our high school, their scores for juniors on the ACT test went up very good in nearly every content area. And we just got this document in the mail in September, and this is a document that speaks about how our graduates, the students that just graduated from Johnson Central, how they did on the ACT. And in, in English, the scores went up from one year to the next. In math, they did, in reading and in science, and the total composite also showed a nice gain in scores. So I think there's so many different measures that we need to look at, at the high school. At, at the elementary, middle, and middle, it's, you're looking at achievement, gap, and growth. But at the high school level, you're looking at five areas total. So with all of that said, although there's no accountability in place for the 2016-17 school year, although there's no accountability in place for the school year that we are in right now, we are still going to be taking a KPREP test this spring. We will analyze it as we always have done. I will not be able to give you rankings and ratings again, but everything that we're doing is leading us into the 2018-19 school year. So what I plan to do in November is to, if you will allow me to, I would like to share with you what the state is saying this new accountability model is going to look like because it's a whole lot more than just one test. It includes a lot of different components to be factored into scores. So for now, I have this to share with you. Our schools, again, are doing a really good job looking at their scores and comparing the work that goes on day in and day out in the classrooms. So if you have any questions, you can ask me now or you can email me a question and I'll be more than glad to answer it for you. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Patton. You're welcome to stay with us or you may have other meetings to go to, I'm not sure.
You're going to go on.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item, 6D, Mr. Cochran.
We have a primary interim agreement of quality purpose that allows some students from their programs to come to our nurse aide program at the high school. It also allows some of our students to hopefully eventually attend some of their training programs. It's a wonderful opportunity for both sets of students. And this MOU also will allow some of their program students to shadow and watch some of our programs with maintenance and classroom staff and custodial staff. So we're asking the board to approve that MOU with quality purpose.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 6D, Mr. Cochran.
KEDC is under grant and they have invited us to be involved, is to get online and learn grant. And part of that training will allow us to send two high school teachers to become virtual facilitators to assist our students in virtual education. So we're asking the board to approve that MOU.
Thank you. Sir, motion to do so.
Motion to do so.
Motion's made as our second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 6E, Mr. Cochran, Mr. Easton.
We missable request for the exit team to go anticipate in tournaments, just looking at the 27th, 28th overnight trip at Campbell County. And then also, I think you should have our wrestling schedule for the regular season that consists of five, excuse me, four overnight trips. One December 2nd in Bristol, Tennessee, December 16th in Pleasant, West Virginia, December 29th and 30th in Parkersburg, West Virginia, and then again in Bristol. And those are both out of state and overnight trips. We request your approval.
Thank you.
For high school, it's just the FFA is going to the livestock acquisition like they have in years past.
And that would be all the trips in? Motion's been made to approve as our second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. 6F, Mr. Jeff Cochran.
We're asking for some permission to apply for the Kentucky 21st Century Community Learning Grant. It's at no cost to the district.
Motion's been made as our second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for vote. All in favor? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six G, Mr. Young.
We're asking for the Board of Education community use facilities for the truck retreat this Saturday at, at WR Castle. It's sponsored by Hager Hill through WES Church, and they've done, they've used our facility for several years.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six H, Mr. Burchett.
Eastern Kentucky University has asked that we approve their student pitch agreement for the two thousand and seventeen-eighteen school year. It's a standard agreement we've done.
Thank you. Sir, motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Six I, Mr. Yance.
Senate Bill Fifty was passing, in this past legislative session, made several adjustments to the way that we adopt our calendars for the next school years. One of those provisions is a new calendar committee, and it has to be appointed by the Board of Education. You should have a list in your packet there, some names that Mr. Cochran and I have put together, the rest of the provisions of this field, and like recommend that we adopt that calendar committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve. Second? Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Now, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Yance. Six J, Ms. Sayer.
This is our standard yearly agreement between the grantee office of Head Start and our Board of Education that monitors the governance and operation of our Head Start program within our school system. We ask that you approve this agreement.
Motion's been made in second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six K, Mr. Diles.
It's just a, a highland, it's a school-wide PTL fundraiser. One they've done in the past is the Texas Roadhouse Rolls and Butter, Timlin Butter, and Sell It. We just asked to approve the pass.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve. Motion's been made by Melvin, seconded by Bruce Hearn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six L, Mr. Crum.
This is the Work Ready Grant, the one point seven million that we were awarded back in May, and we received the funding agreement, and we just have to get your, even though you all approved the grant originally, it's that you all have to approve the funding agreement that goes on to them for approval so that we can start the project.
Thank you. Sir, motion to approve? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six M, Ms. Sayer.
Some of our family resources and services here are applying for United Grants, and we just need, this will be no cost to the district.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If there's not, we'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item seven.
As I started last month, I'm required for my internship of Secret Penancy to update you on the SBGS. This month, I've chosen the标准 five, which is managerial leadership. I won't go over the details. I gave you a copy of all the things I've done to address each standard and indicator, so look at any questions.
Thank you. Also, you'll notice the superintendent's personnel report. No further action needed but the exception of motion to adjourn. Second? The motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Be safe going home.